All right, I'd like to welcome Pastor Russ Wynn with the Springs Church. Everybody, please stand and join us with the invocation.
Thank you, Mike. Good morning, City Council. We just want to say thank you for your service that you provide for us here in this beautiful community. Let us pray. What a beautiful day that you've given us, Lord, and thank you for this wonderful city that we call, that we can live here and be in. And we just pray your protection to continue to guide and direct us, Lord, here in the city. And, Lord, you see the agenda that's before the City Council today. We just pray, God, for your wisdom, your direction, your guidance, your integrity as they look at the issues and digest it. God, give them the wisdom to continue to do the will of the people, God. And, Lord, we just thank you for their service. And, Lord, we particularly pray for our law enforcement officers today that are serving all over this country. We just pray, God, that you would give the men and women who put on the uniform and the families that watch their moms and dads go out every day to the streets. We just pray, God, for your divine protection upon them and the families, strengthen them. They do such a wonderful job in upholding the law. We love their service, Lord, and we just pray your hand upon them today as they serve our community and around this country. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Here.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Simmons? Councilwoman Corey?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Gibson?
Present.
Councilman Forbes?
Here.
All right. I'd like to call public comment on the agenda items only.
Good morning, Roy Dussman, Paradise Road. I think all of you probably got my email, but for those of you who didn't have a chance to read it, forgive me, but I'm going to read it. I want to thank Arlene and her staff trying to answer my questions. And I don't think any fault with Arlene or the staff, but many of the answers were vague, incomplete. I'm talking about the renovations to the existing City Hall. I wanted to find out the current value. I wanted to find out the current value of the property. And all CBRE said was after you do the renovations, it's going to be worth the same thing as it is now. Well, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. So we really don't know what it's worth as it sits. CBRE did say that anybody that ever bought that building will probably do some additional renovation because it won't suit their needs. I still am afraid that the value of that property is in the land. We know that we've invested $2 million in a building already. We're talking about spending $2 million more for a building that may be worth $3.3 million if we're lucky. I'm also dumbfounded by the cost of the renovations. And I took some percentages that were given at a council meeting, applied them to the total cost, and I get the HVAC system to be almost $900,000. The roof is $200,000, security $300,000, ADA modifications $216,000, and architectural upgrades at $355,000. How can an HVAC system cost $900,000? And the ADA stuff, $200,000? First of all, I don't understand why they weren't done back when we remodeled the building in 2004. Now, I know that this is not the time to be selling property, either on Benita Beach Road or downtown. And it's a real difficult decision because these renovations are really more repairs than renovations. But it's also not a good time to be doing any construction work. Please ask builders if they're having trouble finding workers because of COVID-19. I think they'll tell you they are. And a project is supposed to be five months. I did a remodel project. Nothing ever comes in on time.
Thank you, Joy.
So will it be 10 months?
Time.
Or longer?
Time.
I thought we had four minutes.
Three minutes. Yeah, three minutes.
So what should the council do? Pause? Let's figure it out. Let's create a staff to look at it.
Thank you.
And we can...
Yes.
Louise Koich, 26171 Hickory Boulevard, Benita Springs. Thank you very, very much for this opportunity to speak today. I wish to express my support for Agenda Item 7C, approve Florida Department of Environmental Protection Funding Agreement and Budget Resolution for the Feltz Avenue Bioreactor Phase II Project. In 2012, the Florida DEP requested that Benita Springs work to reduce the total maximum daily load of nitrogen in its waterways. Subsequently, the city took the bold step to construct Phase I of a bioreactor project located in downtown Benita Springs. Thank you. Greg Rawl, the geologist overseeing the project, stated that Phase I of the bioreactor project removed between 77% and 98% of nitrate, a key species of nitrogen closely associated with man-made fertilizer, from the water filtered through this system. Mr. Rawl considers our bioreactor the new gold standard for nitrogen removal. I urge the members of this council to support the next phase of this excellent work. Our city must endeavor to build on scientifically proven methods like the bioreactor to rectify the impaired status of our precious waterways. The bioreactor was created in order to reduce the amount of nitrogen in the Imperial River. However, nitrogen impairment is just part of a much larger set of issues. The freshwater segment of the Imperial River is verified impaired for E. coli. The marine segment of the Imperial River is verified impaired for copper, dissolved oxygen, enterococci, and nutrients. Bacteria impairments of the Imperial River continue to grow, and now all of Astero Bay is verified impaired for nutrients. We can't afford for the state or county to take action. Conditions in Astero Bay and its tributaries have worsened, not improved, under their watch. As Mayor Simmons has said on numerous occasions, the economy and environment of Benita Springs are one and the same. We cannot accept the status quo for our precious waterways, which are the lifeblood of our community. Please do all in your power to continue our city's efforts to clean our waterways. Please support Phase II of the bioreactor project.
Thank you.
It is a very important part of a much larger picture. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Candace Drury. I live at 27684 Imperial River Road, Benita Springs. For 35 years, I've been in Benita. I am president of the Mango Creek HOA, and I'm also on the Board of Directors of Unity Church, Benita Springs. I have some issues I am addressing. The Barefoot Beach Hotel and Mixed Use Plan Development, that's been in the works for quite a while, I believe since 2018. I've jotted down some notes that concern me, and I will be following up those meetings.
Excuse me one moment, Derek. Are we allowed to have comment on that during this, or does that need to be during the...
Ma'am, if you would like your comments to be part of the record for that particular item, then we will actually have public comment on that item. You're free to give your comment now, but I cannot guarantee that it'll be incorporated in the record for the Benita, the Barefoot Beach Hotel.
Are we at the meeting on the...
No, they're suggesting that you make your comments when the item comes up.
Today.
Yes.
Which will be very shortly.
Yeah, very shortly.
Thank you. Any other? All right, seeing none, we're going to transition into the zoning, the public hearing part. Derek, do you want to take us off?
Yes. And just as a point of information, we've had a number of questions and emails come in over the last couple of days about the schedule of our land use items over the next couple of weeks and when these items will become for final adoption, when some of the other items that are fairly contentious will be heard. And I have, Ms. Gensen has put together a list of all the land use items that are coming up in the coming months, and I put copies of those up front for anyone who'd like to get copies of them. So that'll show not only the Barefoot Beach Hotel, the Raptor Bay Project, the other London Bay Project, the old Weeks Fish Camp, and a couple of other items. It'll show what their schedule is for the coming months. So I just want to get that out there. We have two items on the agenda today. Both are first readings. Both are also public hearings, so there's an opportunity for public comment. The petitioners and the staff have requested that they give their main presentations at the second reading after they've been heard by the zoning board or the local planning agency as necessary. But this would be an appropriate time for either the council or the public to make comments and questions so that if there are things that need to be addressed, revised, or otherwise heard before that final second reading, this would be the appropriate time to do so. So I'd ask Debbie to do the reading of the first ordinance. Or I can, I'll do it, I'm sorry. A zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, approving application PD-1845808 BOs rezoning 4.75 plus or minus acres from community commercial CC and community and commercial CS to a mixed-use plan development MPD to allow a 202-room hotel, 42 multifamily dwelling units, and 11,130 square foot commercial space for a property located on the north side of Benita Beach Road, west of Imperial River Road, and east of Okina Street, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if the applicant wants to make a brief summary or if staff wants to give any additional summary. Or you can move it to public comment and move forward to second reading.
Does the applicant want to say anything?
Good morning, Neil Montgomery for the record. We didn't really want to make a brief presentation. We were going to do the presentation at the second reading. However, if you want a brief synopsis, we can, or if you'd like to address the comments raised by the public, we can do that. So what's your pleasure?
If you don't want to go now, we can do the public comment first.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, now would be the time for public comment.
I've seen you before.
Pardon me?
I've seen you before.
I'm a waitress, and I work at Fresh Market, so you might have seen me in Benita. It's been a while. My name's Candace Drury. Like I said, and I just take my three minutes to jot down my concerns. Like I said, I live right left east of where the project is going to be. And one of my concerns is exit and entrance on east side of Imperial River Road. Safety issues regarding trucks coming in and out that empties right onto Imperial River Road. The plans are to have two entrances, one dumping onto Imperial River Road and the other on the other side. Trucks gearing up, slamming tailgates, I mean, just the use on that road alone with people, that's a walkway. There's a lot of people that live in that area that use that early in the morning, late at night. They walk, it's a neighborhood. So my concerns are about that entrance and exit. Second is the seven-story, they want seven stories, what happened to the 55-foot rule? I believe that it was in place on parameters for the height. And as the gentleman said before, it's risky at best to build something at this time with coronavirus and impacting our life and our world, no matter what you believe or what you want to believe in. We're impacted by this. This plan is old school, it seems like to me. We have new parameters that are going to be, and procedures that are going to be in place, bigger walkways, bigger rooms farther away from, who knows what's going to be in the future? And it's hard for me to wrap my head around all these decisions being made now for old school plans. We have, seating is different in restaurants, filling those spaces that you want to fill with Starbucks and things, that's in the future, and we don't know what that's going to hold. And it's just risky, it seems to me, to be doing all this right now. Maybe in the future, but right now, it seems risky. During the construction, I know I have three minutes, during the construction, I am worried about parking of the trucks across the street on that big, beautiful lot that Benita Village owns. Trucks parking there that are going to be inevitably there, parking, having lunch. I clean up there every single day when I take my walk, and I'm cleaning up stuff now, so I can't imagine what it would be like. Plus, it's going to be, it's going to be bad enough over there with sound and everything constantly for a number of years, I'm sure. And to have that added on would just add insult to injury. And back to the COVID-friendly area, I think that should be something taken into consideration. I have nine seconds for the future of this whole plan. It's just, everything has changed. Thank you.
Any other public comment on this item alone? All right, seeing none. Does the applicant want to address anything, or we can... Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion passed. Good.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corey?
I'll abstain because I had questions, but I guess...
Deputy Mayor Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
I...
Do you want to ask your question before you vote?
I just, yeah, because I wanted to find out when this comes before zoning, and when do we get the zoning board report?
Okay, we're going to the second reading.
I think Derek's looking it up.
I'm looking at that right now.
Yeah. We got to pass it through here before it went up. He just wanted a date.
Well, no, this item has already been heard by zoning.
We got their report.
It's not in the staff report with the, Jackie, what was the final vote number? I can't recall. I apologize. Mr. Fegan has the...
Good morning, Mike Fegan for the record. This case was heard by the zoning board back on June 16th. As far as what their recommendation was, you'll have that as part of the packet in place for second reading. You'll have it a week before the hearing, and you'll be able to review the recommendations, some of the concerns that were brought up by the zoning board with regards to this project.
Thank you.
Could you tell us what the vote was?
The motion that was made at zoning board was to recommend approval. The motion did not pass. It was a two to three vote. There was five members there that were present, so it was a two. Two voted for, three against it. And the reasons that were stated on the record as reasons for why they felt they couldn't support it had to do with transportation and size and scale comparable to the surrounding neighborhood. Those were the two principal concerns that seemed to be dealt with or that seemed to be brought up at the zoning board.
Thank you.
I've already listened to, we can get the video, council people. I've already listened to the video, and it's also, I believe it's also, we can get the minutes. There is a paper record too, off the, it's right on the website.
Thank you.
I'd like your vote for the record.
I'll vote yes for the record, so we can move ahead to the second reading.
Thank you. Passes. Derek, let's go to the next one.
Next item is a zoning ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, considering request by Pelican Landing Golf Resort LP to amend the Lee County zoning resolution number 94014 Pelican Landing Residential Plan Development, RPD, Commercial Plan Development, CPD, to, one, rezon 20 plus or minus acres from the Kersey-Smoot RPD to the Pelican Landing CPD RPD, two, amend condition nine to create a FL in the RPD land development area and add continuing care, CCF assisted living facility, ALF, independent living facility, ILF, and healthcare facilities, groups one, two, three, to the list of permitted uses, and three, to amend condition 12 associated with deviation 12 to allow a maximum of four residential buildings with a height greater than 75 feet above the minimum floor elevation of Coconut Road in reference to RPD land development area FL on land located within the Pelican Landing Golf Resort, aka Raptor Bay, at the northwest intersection of North Coconut Resort Drive and Coconut Road, Benita Springs, FL 34134, on 55 plus or minus acres providing for an effective date. That was a long one, if you recall. This is, this ordinance has been considered in two parts. The first is, it's being proposed by a contract purchaser, London Bay Homes, from WCI, who was the existing owner. Part of this ordinance is to deal with the final judgment award and determination of the court in the Raptor Bay lawsuit requiring us to adopt an ordinance to reflect the original 2014 application rezoning, which was for four 20-story buildings over parking. There has been a modification to the listed uses that is being requested by the contract purchaser, which is to go from allow not only just residential but assisted living, ILF, and CCF uses. Those uses under the Lee County Land Development Code and Comprehensive Plan are, were allowed as of right. However, in the interest of transparency, and I believe there may be a few other additional tweaks, they are, as a contract purchaser, asking to put those uses explicitly in the ordinance, which is a change from the order, but also to let the public know exactly what the uses that will be there. So they will be reflected on the master concept plan as proposed. Again, the applicant's representatives, as well as representatives from WCI are here. They can answer any questions. This will be an item that will be heard by the zoning board on August 4th, and then for second reading on the 5th.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment?
I have a question for Derek. Do I need to use this?
I can hear you.
Okay. We got smacked in this lawsuit, and they got a lot of money and kept hitting us for those legal fees. So is there any, like, well, now you're changing it. Are you now sitting down and negotiating those last stages?
We are. We are. The attorney's fees on this issue are on your regular agenda. I would like to resolve all of these issues, obviously, so that we do not have any pending issues. Part of the reason the attorney's fees you had give me approval for back in December had not been released is because we have not completed all the steps through the court, including the assignment of units and other issues, which was a reason why, and this really goes to that second item, WCI did not want to agree to resolution on attorney's fees because we had not, in fact, fully entitled the property. This is the first step towards doing that.
So like, they would waive interest because, interest fees?
I would prefer to wait...
We would expect that, right?
Yeah, well, I'd hold those issues to the regular agenda. As far as this item, the additional uses, the ALF, the CCF uses that are, it is my opinion, my legal opinion, those uses are allowed as of right under the Lee County Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code as they are under our code. All that is required is that they be reflected on the master concept plan.
I know.
Those changes could have been done after the zoning was approved, but in the interest of transparency, they had asked to put those on, and I had actually requested that they put those on going forward today.
Well, in interest of transparency, like, we could start getting along better, because this was a really big smack to the city. But go ahead, sorry.
Okay, public comment on this item only. Seeing none, does the applicant want to say anything? Not necessarily if you don't want to. Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make motion of pass.
Second.
Okay. Is there any comment from council? Okay. Roll call.
I do have a comment on what Derek started the meeting with, because I had requested a list of all the schedule of these community development projects that are coming before council and zoning, and I thought it was, it wasn't clear to the public what was going on. And I thank you for doing that, and I hope you will share it with the council and that we do more than just, you know, we put it on our website, you know, what our intention is to distribute that information more widely. I think that's really important because at least people in the district that I live in are confused, and I'm getting a million questions, and I myself wasn't sure about the sequence of things that were happening. So I think we should make an effort to get that, you know, I'll pick up a copy before I leave to try to distribute it to...
We'll make sure to get that electronically to all the council members.
And we can put it on our website.
They can forward, and as well, put it on the website. Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corey?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
All right, now we're on to the consent agenda. Anybody want to pull anything or make a motion?
Motion to pass.
Second.
Motion approval?
Second.
Any comments? So it's a roll call.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corey?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
No comments on the consent agenda? All right, we're to proclamations and presentations. Do we have any? All right, I'm good to skip the brief recess if nobody else wants a break. Keep going. All right, mayor and council member items, there's nothing there either. So on to the city attorney items.
Okay, I've got, I've got three items for you today. Actually, I'm going to slip in a verbal request as well. The first item is, back to Councilwoman Carr's comments, the attorney's fees issue. So in December, we had been in negotiations with WCI to resolve the attorney's fees issue. There are two pending lawsuits, one in which the city had already lost on the attorney's fees issues. I've referred to this in the past as the Fees for Fees case, where we actually are litigating and spending more money arguing about the costs of the fees for the underlying case than the case itself. I have included that in the green sheet as the full number. We are incurring interest on that on a daily basis. The other is the approximately $800,000 related to the larger case, which was the case that we had an arbitration decision against the city for $6 million in damages, and there was an award of attorney's fees. The determination of attorney's fees is not finalized, but we are at the stage now where both the city and WCI are going to hire experts and start to argue about those attorney's fees. And if any, the first case is any indication, that will continue to clock up. They have, WCI has asked that I put this on the agenda, and I don't see any reason why not to. I have asked them to remove some of the fees already. They have done so, and that was the unit count discussion. They have removed approximately $30,000 from that. I am in discussions with them about removing, reducing the interest in some of the underlying principle on the fees themselves based on prior discussions. So I'm confident that I will be able to whittle the number down, five figures more. But I wanted to go ahead now and get authorization and the budget transfer in order to complete that process. So right now, we're asking for a budget transfer of $1,316,000. that process. So right now, we're asking for a budget transfer of $1,316,000, which is approximately $200,000 more than prior. Now, what, one of the major conditions that the council had asked from me in December was that if we agree to pay the attorney's fees, that this is the end of the line. We are not fighting or paying any more attorney's fees related to the annexation agreement or anything else. That was a condition that, at the time, WCI had indicated they were unwilling to accept. They have indicated they are now willing to accept that precondition. And so I'm also, I'm asking for not only that budget transfer, but the authorization to have the mayor or vice mayor execute such a release from WCI, so that we're not looking towards any more issues on the attorney's fees front.
Excellent. Good job. Thank you.
Move it. So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Aye.
Councilman Purdon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Thank you very much. The next item is, and I'll address both the next two items together. I would ask that you make separate, separate votes. Two of the items that we have, we have done to accomplish circumstances under the, under COVID is, one, the outdoor seating. You have authorized a no, no fee, no permit, obligation to allow businesses to have outdoor seating. We had originally thought that as we were heading into phase two, that this would be something that would sunset fairly quickly, and I had provided for 45-day extensions. At your last extension, you had asked me to consider making that much longer. So for both that and the Communications Media Technology Resolution, which was the order allowing your advisory board to meet on Zoom, I have changed their extensions from 45 days until the end of the declaration of emergency, or unless terminated by the council at a prior date. Basically, you won't be seeing these every month again until the end of the coronavirus issue.
Okay.
Is that because the zoning board doesn't want to meet in a room this large? It's not big enough?
It doesn't apply just to the zoning board. The zoning board obviously has more, more contentious issues being quasi judicial. We had to, we had to implement new procedures. We have found that a number of the advisory boards are made up of people that are in at-risk conditions, plus we have the new issue of not having city hall available at our, whenever we need to. So we have given the option to those boards to meet virtually, and so far, that process has been working. So this would just allow them to continue to do so until either you revoke that authority, this declaration of emergency ends, or the governor's order, which authorizes meetings outside of in-person forums expires.
But what, what if we did the advisory board at the, boards at the fire station? So that we wouldn't interrupt here, you know, patterns, and if we could get a scheduled setting?
That, that is certainly an option. It's not a mandate, but we have found that we are having, we would have a difficult time getting forums of those members to attend in person.
Yeah. Can I get a motion on the first one for the land development regulations?
Motion to pass.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Aye.
Councilman Purdon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
And then we need a motion for the, using Zoom.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Roll call.
So wait, does this mean we can't have the meetings if we don't do Zoom?
This does not affect the council in any way.
No, 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 I know. But zone, I'm really thinking of zoning. Because zoning was very difficult on Zoom. It was really difficult.
It has been a learning curve, yeah.
And, you know, we open ourselves up for all sorts of issues.
The, the real issue is the processing of applications. If we can't get a forum in person, and we can't do it virtually, then we wouldn't have a meeting, which would mean that applicants would have to, we'd either have to bypass the zoning board altogether and proceed directly to council, or we'd have to wait.
Could we see if some zoning board would be willing to come to a meeting so that there can be actual questions? Is there anyone that would, or?
We could, I have not made those inquiries from the ones I have spoken to. We could not get a forum. In fact, one member at the time was hospitalized, and so could only perform.
Right, I saw that.
The other issue, as I understand from Ms. Taylor, is that we have a very difficult time doing a combination meeting.
Right. What if we had them on Zoom, but the people could be here? So that they're, you know, sometimes it's their computers that freeze, and then they're frustrated, you know, but if they're here, at least we know they'll be continuing.
In the past, we have allowed the public to attend in person. That way, if they don't have the technology, they have an opportunity to present. It has not been an issue for the applicants, but we have had difficulty integrating that the public, having, having a partially in-person and a partially on Zoom meeting has been more difficult than
It is more difficult? The schools should think about that thing. Okay. I'm sorry.
Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Aye.
Councilman Purdon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
No.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
And then the last item that I alluded to is, as you may recall from the card room discussions, there was an issue regarding Racetrack Road. We were, we were seeking connection point from Racetrack to Old 41. It had come up during that hearing process, dispute as to whether the road, Racetrack Road, was in, it was indeed a county road or a city road. The county was under the impression that they had transferred that property to, to the city. It has not occurred. We've gone back and forth with them on this. They are now requesting a, a formal request from the city council. So what I'm asking for is authorization to have either the mayor or deputy mayor sign a letter to the county saying, please transfer us Racetrack Road. That will certainly.
As agreed.
As agreed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba.
Aye.
Councilman Purdon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr.
Aye.
Councilman Corey.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gibson.
Aye.
Thank you. I have no more items.
Okay, thanks, Derek. City manager items?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. At our last meeting, we were asked, you had requested some additional information regarding the remodeling of city hall and a little bit of a background of the history of the process. We provided a synopsis. Additionally, there was some public inquiries and some questions, which we provided some outreach to CBRE as well, and with our consultants. We're here to answer any additional questions you may have, and look for your direction.
Okay, thank you. Well, yeah, if we want to ask questions, we can. Do we have any questions?
Well, it's not necessarily a question. I just kind of wanted to talk about it.
I can't hear you.
I'm just trying to see logistically if it's appropriate for me to discuss my thoughts on this prior to hearing from them, because maybe they'll be able, if I give some of my thoughts, maybe they'll be able to answer them.
So we did not plan for a presentation today. So this was an opportunity for you to ask us any additional questions.
Okay, great. I do have some additional questions. Well, it's, it's not really additional questions. I kind of wanted to do a, a public comment on this issue, because I had a number of folks who have reached out to me on the phone, on social media, and a number of other areas, concerned about this exact project. So just to set the table, this was a project that was done on the council prior to my arrival.
Wait, you're saying this as a council person, right?
Yes, 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 as a council person. So this, this project was done prior to my arrival on council, so I'm in no way, shape, or form married to it. Additionally, I work out of city hall five days a week, so it will be an inconvenience for me. So I don't love it in that regard, but I, I do want to clear the air on a couple of things. There's, there's kind of this misunderstanding that it's fiscally responsible to spend the 1.9. When, if, if we really want to talk about all of the components to it, okay, so they're saying $7 to $9 million to do a replica, okay? That doesn't include the land. That forces us to now have a feasibility study. That also forces us to create a capital improvement project, and now we're talking about potentially 1.9 million. Now we're talking about down the road, 12 to 14 million. Now, when the city of Bonita Springs started, we wanted city hall downtown. I don't know if that's a practical thing at this juncture, especially considering we haven't even seen what's going to potentially happen at the Bamboo property, which could be one, two, or three properties downtown. So where we would put it, I have no idea. We don't have the cost, or we don't have the money for the land, and we don't have the money to replicate it. But the reality of these improvements are this. Our AC is, is dead. Our roof is past its life. We are non-ADA compliant. Those are things, listen, I, I understand what you're saying. Why wasn't the ADA thing done before? That, look, we're here now, and that was before my, that was two councils before me, but that's where we're at. We have to be ADA compliant. It's not an option. We have to have AC in the building. We have to have a roof that doesn't leak. I'm okay with, maybe, maybe we don't spend the whole kit and caboodle, but we do, those minimum things, even if we wanted to sell the thing, we're going to have to spend 1.2 probably, just to even get it up to that point. And I'm definitely not in favor of saying we need to do a feasibility study and a new capital improvements project. I would love a great, beautiful city hall someday, but I don't think it is the time. I, I agree with you on that, but there, there, this misconception that they're, we're going to recklessly spend money. A roof, an AC, and ADA compliance are not reckless spending. These are things we have to do. I have no issue if we have to go down on some other things, but those are things that have to be done, whether we want to sell it, or whether we want to continue to live in it. So that, this is something, once again, that was done a while ago, but the plans have already been made. We've already agreed to this twice now, and, and, and we're back at this again. Again, not my project. I have no issue, you know, I have no loyalty to it, and I work out of city hall. This will be an inconvenience for me, but I see no reason to not get our roof, our AC, and at minimum, our ADA compliance done. I think it's responsible, and I think it's what we're supposed to do. So I, I just wanted to, I had a lot of people who were very concerned about it, and I think that they didn't understand, you know, potentially, nobody really explained to them the numbers, and I think those are important numbers. $7 to $9 million to replicate what we have. We don't have land. We don't have a feasibility study. We don't have a capital improvements project. So you're talking, you know, you're talking 1.9 million. Yeah, it's a lot of money, way more than I'd like to spend, but you know what? It's a lot better than 14 million, because that's what we're talking about. So I, I just want to get that out there, so that if people had a peripheral view of what was going on, just so you could really look in the guts of what, you know, the scope of this cost actually is. And, and, you know, the start date, I'm, I'm not super concerned about the start date, but at a minimum, those three things have to be done, in my opinion. That's all.
Any other statements or questions?
Yeah, on the construction. Number one, being an architect in Florida, engineer in Ohio, I'm very familiar with the construction industry, and this issue that Corona is causing a big problem is not, it's overblown. There are a lot of reasons not to, that somebody may not want to support this, but that ain't one of them. Second thing, in addition to the HVAC, which needs to be fixed, because it's, it's, it's wore out, it never did heat right, never did cool right. Rooms that were supposed to be cool were hot, rooms that were supposed to be warm were cold. Other thing that is very important, but we're not going to go into the details of it, is there's a thing called increasing the hardness of certain areas of the building in case we have some kind of a issue. And that's some kind of an issue, it's kind of like insurance. If you have insurance, the odds are you won't need it. If you don't have insurance, you probably needed to have it. And so I think that I'm ready to vote on it. Would I like to put it some other place? Yeah. And where I'd like to put it would be on Bonita Beach Road in an area that would allow that neighborhood to have an incentive to upgrade a blighted area, which over 10 years would cause a redevelopment of that area. I don't think that putting it on Old 41 is a good idea, because we already have enough social agencies and other tax-exempt, real estate tax-exempt situations. So if you put city building there, you would just add more to that. And we are paying the debt, part of the debt with what's called tax increment financing, which means we split with the county, I believe, something like 50/50, the increase in the tax revenue since project was approved. And it's very important we get good stuff in there. Good stuff, because that'll raise the property values, which gives us more money to pay the debt with. It's not good to just put something in for the sake of putting it in. So anyway, so that, but that's, that's my view, and we, like Jesse said, there are certain things we need to do, and I want to make sure that we do that security thing.
Chris? At the last council meeting, I raised questions in terms of having at least the major subcontracts reviewed, and wondered if there was a report on the review of those major subcontracts.
We, we don't have an additional report on the subcontractors. We had gone through the initial costs of each of the items with, with the contractors, but we understand that there were some selections that were done based on some experience as well.
Okay. I also requested a, a report on whether or not we were satisfied that Bonita Springs purchasing standards were complied with, or at least there was no major deviations from that that was a fair process.
We confirm with the city attorney, there was no issues with their procurement process. It was in compliance.
And I also asked for a report on the utilization of Bonita Springs contractors, and how many of those, how much of the subcontracts went to Bonita Springs businesses, and were they given a fair opportunity to bid on the work?
Do you have the number? I'm, I'm just looking to the contractors for the number of those that are Bonita Springs contractors in your sub-list. But they were all given the fair opportunity with the advertising that we provided as well.
One of the big questions for that, if they didn't have a Bonita Springs person or contractor, did they go through the appropriate steps within southwest Florida to ensure that contractors in southwest Florida had ample opportunity? And, and if they did, then that's great, but I think that kind of goes to the point of what you're saying, Chris.
All of it was done by local advertising and a walkthrough, so they were all invited to participate.
Hello, John Purnell. I'm with Rate Construction. I'm the project manager on the project. As far as bid process, it's our understanding that we followed to the letter all of the requirements from our continuing services agreement. As far as bid process, we publicly advertised, we had a public advertise, bid walkthrough, and pre-bid conference. We provided detailed scopes to the subs, so they would all be bidding apples for apples, and we did our review based on that as well. And then our award would be based on the lowest responsible subcontractor. So as far as participation from, for Bonita Springs subcontractors, I don't believe any special privileges were provided. We pretty much stuck to the letter of the contract.
Thank you. Anything else, Chris? Can I, I'd actually do. And it's more to Derek. I guess from a policy standpoint, I just, so we don't continue to, to have these type of conversations, when we bid out a contract to a contract manager, okay, so we tell them it's going to cost 1.9, and we don't want any change orders. I've heard Matt, I've heard Matt Feeney be very strict with construction folks. We don't want change orders, right? So if they tell us it's going to be 1.9, and we agree to the scope of the project, and that amount of money, the individual RFP, or the individual components under that project, do those even fall under the scope of our authority, or is that now their deal? Because the, okay, when I sat down with Matt with the contractor, he said, hold on one second. He said, when I make a deal with you guys, I want to, you to tell me how much you're going to spend, and I want you, I want to walk away from it and know that it's going to be taken care of. So that, to me, would say that as far as the contracts under the main contract go, as long as they're not doing anything wrong. as long as they're not doing anything wrong and they're falling within the financial parameters, are we out of our lane by trying to tell them what they, who they can and cannot use? I wanted to, don't get me wrong, I wanted to be Bonita people, but I just want to understand, because if we do this with this, we could hypothetically go into every subcontract of every contract that we approve, and I just don't know, from a manpower standpoint, if that's something that's feasible or appropriate.
I think we're getting into micromanaging, and we want the best people, and if they don't live in Bonita, they're going to have to travel here, they might have to stay here, they have to eat here, and talented people who are unemployed who live in Bonita can knock on doors and say, hey, I know how to use a hedge, you know, I don't know, a hammer or something.
So when you, when you, when you go under a construction manager at risk, and you, you do what's known as guaranteed maximum price, you, then it's the construction manager who has a lot more authority than to make the selections necessary to guarantee that price. You do not have change orders unless you've changed the scope. Now, if the construction manager has agreed to follow local procurement guidelines and seek local contractors, and that doesn't amount to a change in scope, then, then there's no issue. But to the extent they don't get any responses under that guidance, and they, we then say, well, you can't use people outside, you have to go back. That would constitute a change in scope, and then therefore you wouldn't, you may give up that guaranteed maximum price.
From a micromanagement standpoint, I mean, do we have, does Matt Feeney have the ability or time to be doing, evaluating the various 10 contractors that they used for this project? I mean...
So, so part of the benefit of the construction manager process is that you are government light, and so in, in the original procurement of the process, that's where you get the construction manager. We then give direction that we want to provide as much as possible opportunities for Bonita Springs and Southwest Florida folks, but the expertise then in reviewing each of the individual subcontractor bids, their experience, their ability to perform, is all evaluated by the contract manager.
Thank you.
And this is the exact process used in the renovations originally of City Hall.
I think a lot of policy questions have been explored here, which I think is not appropriate for what we're trying to do. If our questions have been answered in regard to this proposal before us, I think we should vote on it, and then I would be amenable to having a discussion about the utility of having such a thing as use local people in our interactions with contractors. You know, it does complicate things in some ways, and I understand the intent, but, you know, I don't know when that policy was put in. We addressed it somewhat when we did the auditing thing, but let's just move to here, and if we want to have it brought up under council items of something to look forward in the future to exploring, I'm amenable. But let's just move on this because we're getting way off target here. We postponed our decision because Councilman Curry had some questions, and he rightfully said that he didn't think the people were informed. I think we've informed the people. I personally think all the questions were answered. If there are more questions that directly relate to this, but the policy decisions are not appropriate for this discussion.
I make motion approved.
Further comment? I disagree with that because it is, I believe it is important.
Oh, comment for a second first. Is there a second?
Second, sorry. Okay. I believe it is important because the reason that I asked Derek this was because I agree with what Chris was saying, but what I'm saying is that what he's actually doing, the, the idea that we are now going to be exploring these things individually for each one, that precedent could expand to the next 10 projects that we have coming up, and we don't have the manpower for that. So I think that is a policy that has to be discussed.
This is why I said it should be discussed outside. Let's vote on this. If you don't want to vote on it, say no. That's all.
Okay. I did have one question. A public comment, it was brought up that the AC was on the magnitude of 900,000, but in the paperwork I saw it was like 413. Can you speak to that?
Hello, I'm Todd Griffith with Merton Professional Engineering. We're the design professional that's been involved in this project for the longest. As the project developed, we brought in an architectural firm, and ultimately recommended you work with Wright Construction as your construction manager based on our experience with them and their ability to perform. To answer the question, or to address the question regarding the cost of the HVAC, the HVAC system itself, subcontract number is $412,750. That's about 21% of the total project cost. I think the 850,000, was it you mentioned, was based on a percentage that was stated at the last meeting of the total project cost. That was, I believe, 45% of the total project cost. That included additional work associated with the HVAC renovation that's not necessarily HVAC related. For example, the ceilings have to come down in order for work to be done, so that's not part of the HVAC system, but it is work associated with doing that work that needs to happen. Replacement of the lights is also part of that 45%, so that may be where the difference is between the 45% number and the 21% number.
Okay, thank you. All right. Fred, one more thing, and then we'll...
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment on one thing about construction managers, and I think I'm qualified to make this because I've literally hired billions of dollars worth of construction management projects. The reason you hire a construction manager in general is that you have a project that you're trying to get done as quick as possible, also get really the top quality workmanship, and you don't want to be held up by subs that are the lowest bidder, but they really can't perform on a fast-track project. Now, our project, I will say this, one of the public comments is about five months. I personally think that's a little bit short. I think more realistic, if I was going to peg it, I would say seven, but the thing is, it just means that those of the staff that are working in the building will be inconvened a couple months more, and still within that contract guarantee price. Now, the way that price changes is if we decide to add something to it that's not in the original scope, that's a legitimate reason that that number goes up. I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
No.
Deputy Mayor Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor, just for point of clarification, our procurement policy for local preference is Lee, Collier, and Charlotte counties. It's not specific to the city of Bonita Springs. That's, in any federal procurement process, that would be excluded. We would have to broaden the issue as well. But for city-initiated projects, it includes Lee, Collier, and Charlotte as local preference.
Thank you. Arlene, yes, the next up is the budget transfer?
Yes. I will let Matt Feeney continue with this, but we wanted to provide an update on the budget transfer so that you can, because it is above the signing authority of administration, there is an opportunity for the grant funding, which does change the cost difference between the general fund and the grant amount. This is because the LMS agreement was the previous project that was listed in this CIP, and we're able to move faster with this source of funding based on that, but it's a different, a different amount, a higher amount of general fund funding.
So, Arlene pretty well summed it up, but the bottom line is the Pine Lake Preserve Restoration Project, which has some flood control components, habitat restoration, and water quality components, has been designed and permitted through a joint venture with the city in the Lee County, so it is on Lee County 2020 property, for about two years now. We'd been seeking a couple of different types of funding paths for multiple years. One is the 319 grant, which we were recently successful with. The other was through the LMS, and as Arlene stated, the LMS match was a lower match, which is what we've been carrying in our budget, than the 319 grant. But we've had a lot of movement on the LMS FEMA grants, but not for Pine Lake Preserve. It's not been authorized, so at this point, we recommend moving forward with the 319 grant that council already accepted, providing the additional funding, and that'll allow us to go to construction. This project is in Florida Bonnet Head habitat, which means there is a narrow construction window, which is the dry season every year. So if we, if we do this budget amendment, it will allow us to move it to construction this dry season and get this thing built.
Motion to approve?
Second.
You have a motion and second, any discussion?
Just thank you, Matt, all the hard work, and Elise Toto, and Ann Wright, and all your team, really amazing, some of the money we might get.
All right, roll call.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Thank you. Before I move on to the city's response to COVID-19, I did want to bring up one item. Back on February 7th of 2020, the city council, and I believe at the time, the city council candidates received a letter from the Village of Astero regarding Coconut Road. Since then, the village manager of Astero has reached out to myself with his public work staff and, and with Matt Feeney as well. They are interested in having a discussion regarding the redevelopment, the improvements possibly needed for Coconut Road based on future zoning approvals. They have appointed their village Astero member, Bill Ribble, as an appointee to have conversation with the city council and staff. They have requested if there's a member of the city council who'd be willing to have a conversation with them as well to be appointed, and then to report back to their respective boards. The mayor did indicate that, to let me share with you all, that he was in full support of Councilmember Corumba doing that, if that's so the wishes of the council.
See, that's, I just looked at you. Would you, would you?
I'd like to nominate, I'd like to, I'd love to nominate her officially from here because I think that, look, Ribble's not going to push Amy around, and I'm excited about that, because this, this conversation was cart before the horse. I think it was, the audacity of Astero to tell us what we're going to do with our own money is, is something that is, they don't know us very well yet. When we had the discussions, it was in our local agreement where we both had financial vested interest. In this scenario, they're saying, hey, we want your money, and here's what we're going to do with it based on studies that we did that are focused northward, not southward. Listen, they didn't give us a dime for Coconut Point Mall or any of the residents in there, and that covers the majority of Coconut Road. We're talking about something with less intensity, less density, in a smaller portion of the road, and they're telling us what we're going to do with our money. I haven't even sat down or had it presented to us yet, but City of Astero staff is worried to the point where we're moving too fast to where they want to sit down with our staff. For what? So that they can put us in a corner and say, here's how it should be spent? I don't want to do anything along lines of saying, okay, A, we're going to give you, you don't come to a negotiation with us and say, here's what you're going to do with your money. You don't come to a negotiation with us and say, here's what I think you should do with your money. Come and talk to us and say, hey, you know what would be great for Coconut Road that we share? That's how we have a discussion with us, and I think it's premature and inappropriate for our staff to even be sitting down with the City of Astero, but if we're gonna, I'd like it to be Member Corumba who does it. Thank you.
Like it to be who?
Amy.
I don't know if we need a motion on it. It's like a liaison, just a discussion or do we...
I think it would be helpful we could have a motion on it.
And what exactly will her role be?
Councilmember Purdon? I'm going to talk to somebody, but I promise you that I'm going to have a lot of meetings with our staff before I go.
Okay, so Jesse made a...
So my motion is to have Councilwoman Amy Corumba be the point person for Bonita in discussions with Bill Ribble and the City of Astero for Coconut Road.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion and second, roll call.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
And just for the record, Bill Ribble's not, not, not pushy. He's just very experienced with different type of folks.
I did have one additional staff request. We do have a July 27 budget hearing for the entire day. We are going to, we are just requesting, is it possible to council that we move that to August 3? And that would give staff just a little additional time for some new numbers that will be coming in. The mayor is available on August 3 also.
I would second that. I think, I think the more recent and updated numbers, the better for something as important as the budget, so I would be amenable to that.
I did want to make you aware, though, that we will need to make our decision on the millage rate at that meeting, and what it is, is not your final decision, but you'll have to decide the, the highest millage rate that you will provide, because we have to do that for the trip notice.
On, on the 3rd, available basically from 11 to 3:30.
Okay.
That's about my timeframe for that, too.
Yeah, something in the morning and late afternoon, so.
Would we want to...
Monday, August 3?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, Monday, August 3.
Okay. Would you want to start at 11 a.m. then? Is that, is that...
Yeah, that would work with Chris and I.
Will we get, we'll get things done?
Is that a time?
What we can do is, we'll, we'll make sure we get...
Because if the mayor has to leave at noon, we're not going to get much done.
I'm sorry.
If the mayor has to leave at noon...
Oh, no, he's available on the 3rd.
The whole day?
The whole day, yes.
Okay, so tentatively 11 o'clock to...
On August 3.
To 4:30?
I'm good till 3:30, but if you guys run long...
So we just say you put down a time?
We'll start, we'll start at 11, and we'll make sure that we get to a vote on the millage prior to that time.
Thank you, Arlene.
And final update would be our, our response to COVID-19. We just wanted to continue to remind everyone that there is funding available through the Lee Cares Act. They can call 533-CARE, and they can walk you through any applications needed, that is for business assistance and individual assistance as well. We continue our weekly calls with Lee County and all the neighboring jurisdictions for updates, with continuing updates on the testings provided at CenturyLink, and we do receive the regular updates as well from Lee Health and CH regularly. We'll continue to provide that update and material on numbers to council, as well as place that on our website as well. And my last item is to get an idea from council if you're comfortable in this location, because we will need to start probably Thursday or Friday advertising for our next set of meetings, and to see if this is acceptable for everybody to continue forward for, for now.
Fine with me.
Works with me.
It's good.
It's great. Like to know the, you know, issues that the whole center has, and we can maybe adjust if there are anything, you know, that bugs them.
One thing that I did say, Nicole was, I'm sorry, Nicole was saying before this that every time we meet here, that there's kids who are supposed to actually be in here, so they just hope that this, that the weather isn't too bad, and they have to go outside while we're doing this.
So there's a certain amount of time that they, the children come inside here as well. If it were to be raining all day, that's where we would have a little bit of challenging, but we're about to start school here shortly as well. So once, this is, right now, you have an all-day summer camp going on. You'll have aftercare starting once school starts.
I just didn't want to be in a position where we're sticking all the kids outside for an extended period of time if we didn't have to, because the church, it's not like we were putting anybody out, I didn't feel like, but I'm good with it if you guys are. I just, based on the conversation I had with Nicole, I just want to make sure, if it's an option between the church and here, and if we do it here, all the kids are outside for eight hours, I'd rather do it at the church than that inconvenience anyone, if it's all the same to everybody else, but either way.
Our presence inconveniences people wherever we go. We just want to inconvenience the least amount, and certainly not the little kids.
Right. If we do continue to meet here, can we get the little earpiece so we all can hear better?
We'll, we'll work on that as well.
And then tell us if we're not speaking into the mic and where we move it to. Okay.
All right, that's it.
That's it. Approval of minutes?
All right, and the mayor and council member reports. We'll start with Amy.
I have a couple of things. I just want to follow up on some of our discussions yesterday, and I, I do want to get together with the outreach committee, and I do want to get together with the outreach committee and, you know, maybe start a 34135 project where we could really get, delve into potential problems there. I'm not saying there are, because judging from the reports this morning, it seems like that the data was totally, totally wrong, which I can't believe, but I, but that's my second point, is that I just want to get together with the outreach committee and the... with the outreach committee, and the things I would like to discuss is truly exploring whether there's a Democrat, there may be a demographic kind of issues there in regard to people's health. The second thing I'd like to explore is whether they have the proper census coverage in 34134, which has been reported more regionally. I don't know if it's the same issue here in Bonita Springs, but I'd like to do that. And it's just talking to the chairperson of the outreach committee and seeing if we can, if there's something that we should do from a policy point of view. I'm not going to advocate for anything. I just want to listen and see if there is an issue, and whether we could come back to council and maybe do something about it. I have some personal concerns about it that I've been worried about for a month or more, and I'd just like to talk to somebody, because I don't want to turn this over to staff. They're already doing too much. I think that might be a committee that could help us. That's the first thing. And as I said, I really want to uncover why, at least if it's correctly reported in the newspaper, which I'm putting it in quotes, that both Lee Health and CH had 100% positive testing reports out of their labs. I can't believe that could be the case, you know? So, I want to just explore that, which would happen on July 11, I think was reported. I want to, and I have some other follow.
And the actual numbers.
I have some follow-up data that I had discussed at our meeting last night. So, I'd like to get together with the same people that were here yesterday and see if they could help us to explore getting accurate information out to the public. And I do want to hope that we can get out some accurate information to people who are afraid. Everybody I talk to is afraid. And I think it's because of the messaging that's coming forth, and I have to put, I hate to blame media, but I think that's where it's coming from. And I think we have to counter, we have to have a strong message coming. I don't want to say anything that's not true, but I don't want to overemphasize things and not putting it in context. I think that's what we as a city council could do to advance the well-being of our people. So, those are two things. And again, following up on the discussion we had during the vote on the city hall, it seems to me like we might want to have an update from the staff on what exactly our procedures are when we go out to bid on things like contract managers, how we use that criterion to use local. And I'm glad that Arlene gave us the information that it's not Bonita Springs, it's regional in regard to counties. And I know that this was discussed at our meeting when we were trying to get an auditor for our city, that there was some concern that if you were too narrowly focused, you wouldn't get the best people to do the work for it. I think that happens. And I do think I want to talk about the whole policy of having that, whether we think that's beneficial or not. I know it was decided many councils ago. I don't have an a priori opinion about it, but I think we should understand how it works. And I think what, he can speak for himself, but I inferred from his discussion that he wasn't clear what direction was given to the ultimate contractor who did the bidding, you know, whether they were said, we advised that you use these criteria. So, what direction was given to them? Once we give it over to a contractor, it's within his ability to just deliver the best product to the city, which I think is good. But if we didn't give the direction, then we're not exercising our policy. Once the contracts are already given, it's already, we have to just accept this over there. That's the way I see it. But maybe I don't understand how it works. But we could have a whole discussion on this, and I suggest that we do it, throw it back to the staff, and maybe they could guide us so that we understand it better. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Jesse?
As far as outreach goes, as the person who will be the liaison to outreach from the city, I would love to work with you on that.
Well, Arlene said she'll just notice the meeting. We'll have a Zoom meeting, and, you know, it'll be convenient for everybody. We could have it anytime, you know, day or night, basically, so we could get together.
And one of the cool things is that a lot of people don't realize, when I was, well, one of the actual members of our outreach committee has contracted and recovered from COVID. So, we only have like six people on there, and one of those actually has gone through this exact scenario. So, I think you'll have a decent amount of support from them.
And Jesse, I have to ask you, why are you doing work in five days a week at city hall?
You know what? Because I think that you've, I really like.
What do you mean you're working there? What are you doing there?
I go in there and I go over stuff. I send out emails.
Oh, you go over stuff?
I walk into Arlene's office. I walk around.
So, that's why they're not getting any work done?
Well, no, I just like to, I think it's important.
I've heard that like 10-minute notice when you're coming.
Yeah, I think they do a 10-minute notice when I'm coming, probably, could be.
So, I'm busy, Jesse?
You know, I like to.
You don't believe in the telephone?
I spend, well, no, yeah, I just spend a lot of time on it. And I think, I like to think of it kind of like, you know, we've never had anybody since Paul Pass who works at a city hall five days a week. I like to work at a city hall five days a week, which is why I had no problem putting this thing a little bit, because I just feel, to me, if I can get in there and I can grind for a couple hours and make sure that I'm touching all the things that I need to be touching, that I'm going to be a better councilperson. So, that's why I do it. That's why I do it.
Okay. Well, I work from home. I'm sheltering in place, so, okay. I was curious, like you said, that's our old times. Thank you.
Yeah. So, yeah, I'd be glad to work with you on that. As far as the renovation goes, I don't know if we have a price for what it would be for just the big three. Now, I know Fred, I understand what you're talking about with the security side of it. The argument you made that we could resell it for higher if we still did those things, unless we send it to another government entity, I'm not sure that that flows. But I don't know that we've seen anything that would price out specifically the things that we need to limp along appropriately. I think it's 1.2, but that was based on things that I put together in my head. So, what it would cost to limp along with those three minimum to get us where we need to be. And then also, I would like some clarity in regards to contract management as well. Just, and it's not, I'm not saying that I agree or disagree with anyone. I would just like to understand logistically if my understanding of how this process works is correct, and if it isn't, then great. But I would just like some clarification on the specifics of, once we sign a contract for a certain dollar amount, do we then step back from it and let them do that, or are we involved? And if we are, if that is the policy, are we doing that on all projects? Are we doing it on specifically just this project? So, I would just like that clarified. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Lauren?
Earlier, I thanked our assistant manager, and Ellie, and Anne for their work, but I also want to thank the whole staff, and everybody's doing so much from noticing to setting up. And we have our special thanks to our tech whiz over there who go unappreciated, but we know how hard you work, and everybody worked so hard to make us comfortable and content, and that is appreciated beyond belief. So, thank you all very much.
Chris?
I'm fine.
Fred?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. One is a comment on one of the things Amy was asking about. And if you listen to what the hospitals reported, if you go in and they think you have the virus, they give you a test. And the nice thing about it, you don't have to wait two, three, four days to get the results back. It's just boom. What they're doing, I believe, is they're taking the number of tests they run and dividing that and getting the number of positives they get, and that gives them a higher, a higher number.
I'm sorry, Fred, could they come and explain it? Because there's a whole bunch of different things.
He's making a comment.
All right, okay, I'll drop that. We'll go to the next thing. Next thing is that I do have a relationship with a couple of these guys, and I'm going to see if I can get them to take and give us a list of where, which precincts in Bonita Springs are the hotspots. And that won't violate HIPAA, but it would be helpful, I think, to everybody on this council to know in 34135, what are the voting precincts that happen to be hotter than others. Now, the last thing I'd like to do, based on the discussion of yesterday, even those that did not support doing something even on a six-week basis, I'd like to make a motion that we urge, we write a letter, we get it staffed and write it. They can use a Astero letter, which was a strongly worded urge letter. In fact, you all got a copy of it, I think, at the previous meeting. Use that as a basis, but add to it. Send it around to every council member to add it or add to it, but get it done so that the mayor can sign it. It'll go out as an e-blast to this people in the city. It simply says, we're urging you to use a mask, especially when you go out into buildings, places of business. Not mandatory, but it's things that some of us that didn't vote for it said that they thought we could do. So, that's my motion.
You can't make a motion.
You can't make a motion right now.
You should do it as a green sheet for the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Well, just to react to, I think we can, what I'd like to explore is a much broader issue, and I think I've already talked to Arlene about it, is that I do think the city can make an outreach to our businesses. I mean, we should talk about it next time, but it's really the businesses that have to toughen up, because they're authorized to open under the CDC guidelines, all right? And we should encourage them to follow them. And that's wear a mask. And if you're doing person-to-person services, the client and the patron is supposed to wear a mask. And if they said, you can't come in here if you don't have a mask, that no one would be in there. And that's all, what I would be in favor of is just reiterating the CDC guidelines to businesses. But let's talk about it next time. I mean, I'm not against what you're saying. I just think we have to focus it along with what we already know are the process. If they're not meeting anybody, they don't need to wear a mask. If they can't do social distance, it's not just one thing. That's what I'm saying. The guidelines even say, if you can do six feet, you don't need to wear a mask.
And watch him.
Okay. And for myself, I just want to say thank you to everybody for making my first official meeting go smoothly.
Mr. Mayor, good job.
Great job.
We didn't notice.
Great job.
We were the missteps. I didn't notice any.
I forgot to call for discussion before the roll call vote, so, on one item. All right, so approval of minutes?
Motion to approve?
I have some, Arlene and I were just talking. We do have one more item we'd like to bring to you, and then allow for some public comment on it. Yeah, I couldn't let you get off easily, right?
And we have a.
We, now that the entitlement process has been completed for BG Mine, we are currently in the appeal timeframe. Our agreement with them requires the closing on the property known as Bonita 248, the 248 acres. In speaking with Anne about where we should use the money to acquire that property, it's just under $5 million. It is our understanding that currently, and financially, I know your budget meeting's coming up, we would be depleting our reserves at a time during hurricane season, and that that may not be the best use of resources. So, Arlene and I want to talk to you about is, we have the ability to, I know that you had a meeting very recently where we talked about refinancing the city's debt and looking at those issues. We would like the possibility to move forward to have Ms. Santa Maria and her group, RBC, look at short-term borrowing in order for us to acquire that, that is refundable and can be refinanced, so that we're not drawing down from our current reserves, that we have something that is, you know, short-term in nature. It could be a fixed rate for a long period of time, but it would be something that we could either roll in or have additional flexibility. But in order for us to start that process before the closing date, we thought we should bring it to you at this meeting and ask for your approval to move forward on that.
Could we also, I'm sorry.
Any further decision will be at the following meeting. It would just be that if she were to begin procuring that, it would come in between the two meetings.
Could you also ask her to present a line of credit alternative? Because we could use the reserves as long as we had, you know, an on-call line of credit, and, you know, and that is also associated with some kind of interest rate. It may not be economically feasible, but let's also include that in the discussion.
Absolutely. A great number of municipalities are using lines of credits for their debris cleanup and other issues that they look at. So, we will follow up on that option as well.
Motion to approve?
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
All right, approval of minutes?
No, no, public comment.
That is after the approval minutes, or?
No.
Did you mean on that item that we just voted on?
We have to.
Dwight, did you want to comment on?
[laughing]
Well, on the, what we just voted on?
Because this is, you're going to make a final decision on this. There's still an opportunity for public comment on that. It can be on any topic.
Okay.
So, is this the final public comment?
Yes, go ahead. On anything you want, and it shouldn't be thank you.
I'm sorry?
On anything you want, right?
Okay. As you know, I was against the vote that you all approved last night, but Jesse, I want to say that I really appreciated how much I think you struggled with your decision. And you brought up two really good, strong points. So, thank you for that. One of the parts I didn't get to in my earlier thing was, my wife made a comment, fixing this old building up is putting a Band-Aid on skin cancer. I think it's going to take longer than they expect. Is there a penalty if they do not finish in time?
Public comment.
I understand. Ask the question. Let's find out an answer. And again, thank you for putting up with me. I know your job is difficult. That's why I don't even want to run for office, so, thank you.
Thank you, Dwight.
And I'll officially ask that question if we could find that out for him.
We'll find out.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no other public approval of minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Oh, I thought we did.
Second.
We didn't both go.
Motion in the second. Roll call.
Deputy Mayor Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Karamba?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
All right, and motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.